All right, so we are ready to go. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's a regular meeting for the Saldovia City Council on Monday, April 28th, 2025 at 6:00 P. M. All those in attendance, Kennedy?
Here.
Peyton?
Here.
Myself Keith Lee, here. Langbart? Is not back yet, so we'll move on. Barbara?
Here.
And Rojas?
Here.
All right, and if Heidi or Liz want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Black of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item C, excused absences, we have one. Mayor Campbell will not be with us this evening. Item D, agenda approval. I'll look for an approval for tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All right, that's an approval by Kennedy and a second by Peyton. And moving on to item E, consent agenda. All items.
A real call vote, Ashley.
Oh, sorry.
Would you like me to do it?
Pass them through. All those in favor for agenda approval? Kennedy?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
Myself Keith Lee, aye. Langbart? Is absent. Barbara?
Aye.
And Rojas?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. And moving on to item E, consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion. No discussion in one vote. A council member may request to remove an item or items for discussion and a separate vote. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed under new business. The first item is approval of the minutes, minutes of the special meeting, April 8th, 2025. Item number two is ordinance introduction, none. Item three, resolutions. We have three this evening. A is Resolution 2543, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, authorizing the participation of the City of Saldovia in the Alaska Public Risk Alliance. B, Resolution 25-44, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, authorizing the issuance of requests for proposals, RFP, May 2025, Rabie Vista Stormwater Infrastructure Improvements, funded through the Alaska Clean Water Action Grant Program. And C is Resolution 24-45, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, Alaska, authorizing the issuance of requests for proposals, RFP, number June 2025, Main Street Saldovia Stormwater Infrastructure Improvements Project, funded through the Alaska Clean Water Action Grant Program. Does anybody want to move any of the items out of the consent agenda? Or have any questions in regards to the consent agenda tonight? All right, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Rojas and a second by Kennedy. All those in favor, Kennedy?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
Oh, Peyton?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Barbara?
Aye.
And Rojas?
Aye.
All right, five approve, zero against. We will move on to item F, mayoral proclamations. We have none this evening. Item G, public presentation prior notice. Each presenter has up to 10 minutes, and we do have one on the list. Brad from Homer Electric with our update. So Brad, I'll let you take the floor.
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you good on Zoom.
Okay, great, I'm looking in the room, make sure everybody's here. I think so. Good evening, my name is Brad Janorski, General Manager, Homer Electric Association. I've been there for just over two decades. So those of you that have been around know I used to be much taller, dark, flowing hair. Don helped me out on this one. And, but that's what happens after 20 years. With me, I've got Larry Jorgensen, Director of Power Production. We like to come over here a couple of times a year just to give updates to the community and what's going on on the south side of Catch Mac Bay. Before I get rolling too far, just a reminder, our annual meeting is this Thursday in Kenai. And I should know if it's Zoomed or Teams or not, but I don't. Look on our website and that'll tell you. That has grown in popularity since the pandemic, so. With that, real quickly, probably our biggest focus in this area is twofold in this company year. Larry will talk about our generator update that we're gonna do later on this summer. And then I'll lead it off with right away declaring, we're going to do, in fact, I just drove out on Jackie Bay Road and a lot of railways look good. But our system overall has seen about a 560% increase over the last five years. Most of that is from trees outside our railway. As you guys know as good as anybody on our system, a lot of the landowners on the Kenai Peninsula are remote, they don't live here. And so there's lots of properties that have trees. Our railways are pretty narrow. Most of the three phases 40 feet, most of the single phase is 30 feet, and that's total. So on a three-phase line, which is between here and Homer, that three-phase line is 20 feet on either side. Most of the trees outside our railway is much taller than that. So our line crews are busy hopping across our entire system. So it was perfectly, it has not been kind to us. I'm probably the only one that's gonna be happy if we have a cold, wet summer. That means we're not forest fires. So with that, we are gonna go back, although re-clearing our railways again, like we normally do. We are gonna target areas outside our railway. You guys realize it or not, any tree outside the railway, we would probably want permission to cut down, even if it's leaning towards our line. We have no rights on private property. So, and a lot of the property owners that don't live here don't realize they have trees that are leading towards our line. So fortunately, we're able to secure, with help of the borough, two federal grants to help us. So those grants will be targeting trees outside of our railway. So we will be very busy on this outside of Catchway Bay this summer. So with that, our second big project on the side is gonna be targeted to project basically one of our generators. And later I'll turn it over to you.
Well, good evening. Thought I'd give you a little bit of a rundown. You know that at our generation facility, we've got two generators. One that's a little bit newer, which is a CAT generator, and then we've got an older Mitsubishi. The Mitsubishi was made in 1989 and was installed here in 2004. The problem we've got is maintenance on it has become really difficult. We have oil that's been leaking into, I mean, excuse me, fuel that's been leaking into the oil, which is causing us some issues. We have some high vibration issues, and then parts availability have been really tough. There's one Mitsubishi vendor in the state. Most parts are six to 12 months out. And just earlier this year, we ended up with a starter failure. We had to part together from pieces and parts from several different ones, and we finally were able to get one repaired enough to be able to make it work. So we are going to be replacing that old Mitsubishi generator with a new CAT generator. It's specifically designed to be able to handle the phase imbalance that we have over here in Saldovia, which because of the way that we're wired, we have certain phases that have heavier loads than others. And it's designed to be able to handle that. The new unit is 20 to 30% more efficient on fuel, and it's quite a bit quieter. And I know that there have been noise complaints in the past from the Mitsubishi unit. That will be going away. We hope to start this replacement in June and have it complete by the end of the summer. And I think that's about the size of it.
Thanks, Larry. Two last things. One is, we are still working on a grant to bring three-phase power directly from Homer to Saldovia through an emergency cable. Go back in water and go over to Nanwolik, and then convert some of that line that goes from Nanwolik to program over to three-phase. That would include in selling a battery over in Saldovia, a smaller battery. We've submitted a concept paper. We should hear in June if we get invited to submit a full application, which I think is due within of August. So that three-phase line, like our current undersea cable, will have a fiber in it. We are not getting into the fiber, into the internet business, but that fiber will be available for other businesses that do get into that business. So no promises, but we're really hopeful. I think that's a roughly $65 million project. And the cooperative have put in roughly $20 million, roughly a third of it, and then two-thirds come from the feds. So gotta fingers crossed. And then lastly, unless I get requested, otherwise, we'll be back in August for our usual round of area meetings. So if I don't see between now and then, we'll see in August. So if it's up to the chair, I'll take, Larry and I will take questions and get out of your hair for the night, or if there's no questions, that's fine too.
Perfect, thank you gentlemen. Council, do you have any questions for either of them?
I have a question.
All right.
So the replacement of the Mitsubishi, is there on a grant fund for this? Is this grant money that, for the purchase?
I was gonna say, to my knowledge, we don't have any grant money that we're using for this. This is just a planned replacement of obsolete equipment.
And does it have to be a US-made product on that?
We have Baba that we have to meet, so this was manufactured in the US. It's not, you know, and shipped up here. In fact, that's what we're working on right now, is getting it from Seattle to here, so.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a great question. We did apply for, Larry's correct, that this unit, there is no grant funds for it. All of HCA members will be paying for it. However, we do have a base loan powering affordable clean energy under the Inflation Reduction Act. That's $100 million. And off that $100 million, 50 to 60% of it are gonna be written off on day one that we commission it. And we are looking at building a large solar project somewhere on our system, or multiple solar projects. If we can get them on one site, that's better, because we get economy to scale. And by the time we get that write-off, that $100 million gets to $40 million. And I am told that through the direct pay program, which really allows not-for-profit cooperatives the same tax benefits as a for-profit utility, we may be 10 cents on the dollar or less to our members. So we're working on, they gave us a 30-day rescoping period, so we're doing that today. Excuse me, we just completed that. That was due, I think, the end of this month, or the 25th. What's the date? 28th, a couple of days ago. And so we got that in, so we should hear back within the next two months. And quite frankly, dealing at the federal level right now is a challenge, because a lot of the people we dealt with are gone. So we're keeping our contacts and we're staying on top of it, so. We're moving forward with the solar project. We're actually later. We need to release that generator. And we got our fingers crossed for that submarine cable. You know, whether we run it in or not, sooner or later, we're gonna have to put in another cable. If that wouldn't fail today, guys, we'll be burning a whole lot of diesel before we can get a cable over here. The lead time we're seeing is incredible, so. Sorry, good short question, long answer, apologize.
Good answer.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Walt Sonnen.
Madam Chair, we do have somebody in the audience, if you're open to public comments? I'm open to public comments.
Yeah, some years ago, when our generators were both replaced, I don't know, it was 20 or 25 years ago. The generators that we got, I thought were two Mitsubishi generators. Has one of those been replaced since then?
So, yeah, we, I'm sorry. Excuse me, yes, we did replace one of the Mitsubishi with a CAT generator. And so now what we're doing is replacing the other one. So, yeah, they're originally, what we ended up doing is we bought four Mitsubishi's that were used and took the best parts of all of it and made two units out of it. And then we took and used those and we ran them for 20 years. And now we're replacing those with the CAT generator.
I see. Yeah, well, how many hours does the Mitsubishi that's in existence have on it?
Well, they have different ones. I would have to pull the records to see. I mean, they've, you know, they've, some years we use it pretty heavily, and other years not. It really depends on the weather and the conditions of what happens. The biggest concern for us is not so much the hours, but the availability and the cost of maintenance. And part of the problem with the Mitsubishi is that parts are no longer available. And they're just, they're obsolete. And if I can't repair them, then when they go down, then, you know, puts you guys at risk. And that's not what we wanna do.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that was a, that was a great question. And I know when I first got here, over 21 years ago, those two units were originally installed, those two Mitsubishi's that you referenced. And I was told at that time they came from a skyscraper in New York City. Goldman Sachs building in New York City. And probably about a month ago, I had a member with good intentions saying, "Hey, I saw a bunch of units online, here they are." I got three choices, I'm like, no, we're gonna put them new, because anytime they break, they're just too expensive to fix if they're used. So we're gonna go with brand-new units that are designed specifically for the load imbalance that we see in this area that Larry referenced earlier.
All right, any other questions? Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, thank you gentlemen for all that great information, exciting news. We will move on to our next item, item H, which is public presentation for items not on the agenda. I don't have any on here, Liz, is there anybody in the audience?
Wanted to do a public comment, right? Oh, I did want to do a public comment. This is asking.
We have Ms. Laurel Hiltz online.
All right, Laurel, floor is yours.
Hi, sorry, I almost missed that. Thank you. All right, well, just hitting the ground running in wrapping up May, and, well, I guess we're running from May and heading toward, from April and heading towards May. But we just had a great spring carnival weekend with lots of activities for the kids and community members to take part in up at the school. So that was great, and we partnered with the track and field team from the school and Coach Swick and the Saldovia preschool. And Susie Strannick from Time on the Boardwalk Plus had a lot of fun with staff from Solid Rock Bible Camp. And then, of course, a lot of SVT staff working together to just make it a great time for everybody. So we really enjoyed that. And the Booster Club, there was a lot of pizzas and pretzels and good stuff made, and everybody enjoyed that as well. So super glad to have the opportunity to have an event at the school where the community can come together and everybody can see each other and see the kids and the new babies and cheer on, cheer on our kids and communities, so. As we move into May, some great things happening. We've got cold water safety training happening for kids of all ages from kindergarten through 12th grade. And we're continuing swimming lessons through the, through partnership between the tribe and the school. And we are also hoping to have at the end of May a swim finale for all the students who have been doing swim lessons this semester and kind of a way to celebrate the ability to use the pool as we have, and certainly hope for it to be usable in the future and available to us. Also, we've got a bike rodeo coming up on May night, so a chance for the kids to get out and practice their bike riding safety. Of course, this year they've had a little extra time to ride on the streets without the snow, so. But reminding them of best choices and how to be safe on the main street in particular. And let's see, we are going to be kicking off summer, quote-unquote, with our annual summer kickoff picnic and barbecue. That'll be coming up on the Friday after school lets out, so I think that's the 23rd of May. And then planning our summer activities. And at Saldovia Village Tribe, we've got a lot in the works, but also seeing great things for kids from the Saldovia Arts Council with the Drama Camp, the Summer Solstice Music Festival, the Jacklough Bay Tenmiler. The arts count, the Sea Otter Community Center is gonna have a week of percussion with Eddie Woods coming over from Homer. And then Saldovia Village Tribe has three culture camps planned this summer, a sports camp and a paint camp, painting camp. So lots of great things planned for kids and the community, and really looking forward to seeing everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Anybody have any questions for Laurel?
I just have one. Laurel, do you have a date for the ferry, the bay ferry?
Yes, so Saldovia Bay Ferry will do an early run, and it's the, I think it's the third full weekend of May.
Okay.
And then the next week on Thursday will launch the season. And the season will reflect past seasons and schedules where there's no Wednesday except during the month of July.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, looking forward to it, we've got a great crew. And I just think geographically, you'll be seeing the ferry docking at a different location this year, so.
Awesome, thank you Laurel for all the great information. With that, we will move on to our next item, item I, Committee and Advisory Board Reports. Each member has five minutes, and we have two of these tonight on the agenda. And our first one is Walt Sonnen, Cook Inlet Regional Citizens Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Walt Sonnen, I'm your representative.
I'm your representative to CircAC. And recently, you guys reappointed me for another three-year term. I thank you for that, that you have confidence in me. Sometimes I think, because when I get here, no one asks any questions. And I, I guess you kinda have an idea of what we do at CircAC. But I, I feel that sometimes, don't worry about it, because Walt's got our back, kind of a deal. And I guess I do, but I, I would encourage more feedback from you guys if, if there are any questions or comments or doubts or anything. So I'll continue to, to carry on. I've been with the CircAC now for more than, more than 10 years. And I, I enjoy meeting with these people. Most of them are the same people that were there 10 years ago. And so we have a pretty consistent group. And we, we know who we can count on for this and that and the other thing. We had a meeting on the 4th of April in Kenai. This is one of three board meetings that we have with the Complete Board. And this one is what they call the annual meeting. We do a lot of elections and reviews and that kind of thing. But for me, the meat of the, these meetings are the speakers that, that come. And we heard first from Casey Sullivan, who represents Marathon. And he gave a very thorough report about Marathon, what they're up to, what, what they do. And the, one thing that he reported that on your page 41, you can probably see a lot more than I can report. But they employ 280 people in the refinery here. And that they contribute $40 million to the local economy, which includes the contractors that they employ. One thing that I didn't, I didn't notice, or I didn't know, was that in order to refine oil, it requires a lot of natural gas. And that makes their refining a little bit more expensive than in other places, because he mentioned that the natural gas here costs four times what it does down below, which kind of surprised me, but I, I thought, anyway. And one, one question that I had is we, we do see Andover and Tesoro entities still around here. And apparently, those are all fully owned by Marathon. And due to tax considerations and this and that, sometimes the, these, the prior operators of the refinery's name is, is still attached. But Marathon owns 100% of all the refining activities here. And all of the oil that comes from Cook Inlet goes to the Marathon Refinery. There was a graduate student from the University of Alaska that gave quite a detailed report on Beluga activity using DNA samples. And they collect these, I guess, from the mud in the, in the water samples to, to try to determine Beluga activity in both the Casiloff and Kenai rivers. And it was a little bit beyond my understanding of what went on. But the scientific portion of what, what we do at CircAC is, is a big part of the organization. And Belugas are a part of that and in what we do in Cook Inlet. There, there's a fellow who came to our meetings for the first time about our meetings for the first time about a year ago, Yetamar Rodriguez. And he uh, represents the uh, Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation in the uh, the SPAR department, which is the spill prevention and response. And he uh, he gives a very detailed report on what they're doing. The director of ADEC got replaced, the lady that we had who came to us about a year ago, got a different job and she was great. And we uh, we we really liked her. But ADC seems to have a little bit more um, oomph to it in the last year or so. Um, there haven't been nearly as many resignations and turnover. So that is an indication that the organization is a little bit more healthy than it used to be, which is a um, that was, which is a good thing. And um, there, the the great big uh, tanks that were used over at Drift River. There's uh, seven tanks over there that the oil that was produced on the west side would would go to. And then a tanker would come every two weeks and take the oil from those tanks over to the east side for uh, to the refinery. And this was uh, eliminated two or three years ago with a pipeline that comes across, which Circac had been advocating for some time. Um, in the interest of preventing oil spills because the um, the possibility for oil spills was much greater using the ship to bring the oil across. Anyway, there, these tanks have been there and they're uh, they're still on the the oil spill plan and the idea is to uh, cut them up and remove them. And I think that will be done here sometime in the next year or so. Um, that's, that's about all I have here. Um, does anyone have any questions?
Questions?
It it was my understanding Hill Corp bought out the Marathon portion of that. Is that true or not true at Drift River?
I'm sorry?
I thought Hill Corp purchased the interest in Drift River from Marathon. Is that not so?
No, uh, no, I Marathon is in uh, in the refining department. Hill Hill Corp is in the
Yeah, well, I understand, but I thought you said that that the names, even though it was Tesoro was still, they're still the owner of uh, does Marathon own the Drift River plant? The tank farm over there?
I, I don't, the Drift River isn't a plant. It was just
No, I know it's still receiving there, but I was, to my understanding, is Hill Corp purchased that and bought their interest out over there. So I don't know. I know they've got a plan to to scuttle that tank farm over there just because of the threat of the
I guess it belongs to Hill Corp.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, okay. I thought maybe you were saying it was Marathon, but I think it's Hill. Yeah, okay.
It's uh, it it's the refining part that is 100%.
On the east side, yeah.
Marathon. All the stations that we see around that used to be Tesoro, they're all now Marathon. Okay.
Any other questions from council? Any questions in the audience for Walt?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Walt. Um, like that, we will move on to our second committee and advisory board report. Like to welcome up Cindy Mom with the Saldovia Public Library with the Director's Report. And you can find her report on page 43. And as a supplement to that, you can also go in your laydown and the first item there is a letter from Marissa, one of our library volunteers.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you. Um, again, my name is Cindy Mom and I'm the Director of Saldovia Public Library. Uh, we are neither a committee nor an advisory board, so um, it's funny to be on the agenda under that category. We're actually an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit and we're, we were founded in 1935. So uh, we're in our 90th year or maybe 90, 91st, I don't know. And I don't know if anyone from the library has actually presented any updates or anything to the city council. If there, I don't, as far as I know, there's not a history of that. So I have five minutes to give you 90 years worth of information. Um, and uh, Marissa Wisneski is our treasurer and Bobby Sweat is also here and she's the President of our board. Um, we have always been volunteer staffed until very recently. I became the Director in December 2024. And breaking with tradition, I'm actually receiving a a small monthly stipend nowadays. Um, but otherwise, we have never really had any paid staff at the library. Uh, the reason I wanted to update you tonight is that you may have been hearing in the news recently about an executive order that has cut funding to museums and libraries. So I wanted to update you about that and let you know how that will affect the library, also what might lie ahead and reassure you about the stability of our library, but also ask you for help. Um, but first I want to thank the city. I'm not sure if you're aware of that the city has been providing an in-kind contribution for our space in this building, uh, including utilities and upkeep, which is almost $13,000 annual val- annual value. Um, and that goes a long way toward keeping us secure. Unlike a lot of other public libraries, when their funding is cut, they might have to close their doors because they can't pay the rent. And we're good. We don't have to worry about that and we're not going anywhere. So I wanted to sincerely thank you. I'm not sure that we have said thank you recently for that. It's a huge deal. Um, we're also secure because our volunteer staff donate a value of about $75,000. If we had to pay staff, um, that would be a huge expense. Uh, that includes the Director. I get paid a little bit, but I volunteer an awful lot more. We have IT volunteers, people who are doing admin, grant writing. Um, it's a huge job to keep the library going and it's a lot more complicated nowadays than it was in 1935. So we have technology and all sorts of things we have to keep up. So the combination of our volunteer value and the city of Saldovia's in-kind contribution for our use of this building provides 87% of our operating costs. So the remaining, remaining funding comes from the Public Library Assistance Grant, which I'll call the PLA. And that comes from the state of Alaska. And again, you might have heard uh, last fall, there was a lot of press coverage in uh, the Homer News on our local NPR station about a huge funding cut uh, for us and every other library in the state of Alaska. We've been consistently receiving $7,000 a year from the PLA. There are 82 libraries in Alaska who also each get that amount. And unexpectedly, with no previous warning, they cut that amount from $7,000 down to about $1,800. Um, so we were pretty um, upset about that. Um, eventually it was fully funded. Um, but that's, that's the money that we depend on for all of our collection, our new books, DVDs, magazines. And we use that for supplies like copy paper and toner and equipment and a little bit to pay our bookkeeper. Um, and so that grant, that was maybe a wake-up call for us that it might not be around forever. And so we are trying to come up with some plans for alternative sources of funding. Um, how to get our footings in a more sustainable, long-term way as a nonprofit. Um, but we did want to ask the city, just in case you happen to have any extra funding around, um, about some potential for future to support the library. The first one is just to status quo. If we can count on you to um, continue to provide our space across the hall and downstairs. Um, from what I know, and I've never seen a document, uh, the use, the agreement of the use of this building goes back to when Susan B. English wrote the grant to fund the construction of this part of the building with the understanding that the library would always have a home here. Uh, I have not seen that document. We might have it in a box somewhere, um, but I was hoping that maybe we could get uh, we could find it if the city has a copy or um, write up a fresh one, memorandum of understanding just to say this is formalized and we want to keep, keep that relationship going. Um, next, if we kind of go up a step, um, we would love it if the city could earmark some discretionary funds in case the Public Library Assistance Grant does go away. That's our grant from the state of Alaska. So that's $7,000 a year. That would allow us to continue to build our collection, keep it up to date, get new items that patrons are looking for and um, provide our our regular internet, um, copy machine, use of computers, wifi, which is a a huge thing for residents and visitors here, use our wifi even when the library is closed. Um, also the funding for my stipend and our bookkeeper, we're currently paying out of our savings for that. So um, that's something that we really want to try to secure some funding. If the city could help us with that in any way, um, that would be amazing. And then finally, just um, number four, and all, all four of these are in the the document that's in the packet. A competitive hourly rate for a professional library director is about $45 an hour and 14 hours a week, which is roughly what I'm doing right now. Um, that would be $32,760 a year. Um, so that's sort of the pie in the sky, but I don't know what the city's budget looks like at all. I have not been paying attention as a good citizen should. Um, and I'm not very good at at asking for help or advocating for myself, but for the library, uh, definitely I want the library to keep going and being strong. And um, I also wanted to assure you that we are still gonna be here, even even without funding. Uh, we won't close our doors. We have a great collection. It just won't get refreshed or or updated. So um, I'm happy to take any questions. Um, you can always get in touch with me here at the library or um, and I really appreciate everything the city has done to support us in the past and thanks for the opportunity to give you an update.
Thank you very much, Cindy, for giving us the update on everything that's going on. And I'll turn it over to council if you guys have any questions for Cindy.
Uh, Madam Mayor. Yeah. Uh, yeah, Cindy, thank you for your presentation, Vivian. Um, the information you share with us is good to see for the council. Um, in the future, maybe it's a conversation the council can have. Our budget is pretty tight, um, like everywhere. But I think it's a, this, the library is very important to the community. And it's always been manned by volunteers, but there comes a time when sometimes things need to change a little bit. Uh, but thank you for your report and I think the council will be, uh, when we look at our budget this May and prioritize things, it might be something we consider. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Vivian. Anybody else?
Ashley? I just, I just wanted to make comment. I appreciate your comment and sharing the information, letting us know. Um, I can speak for myself. I don't, I don't think any of the other council members uh, feel the need to change things as its status quo, but I would like to see an updated memorandum so we all are on the same page. And then maybe we can look at what we can do. Uh, maybe whether it's through the chamber and fundraising or the city, whatever, see if we can't find ways to do that. But just want you to know, I'd like to see the library continue and the benefit to the kids.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Any comment from the audience or online? All right, with that, yeah, I'd like to just add, um, Cindy, I think it's really important as a volunteer-based entity in the city to be bringing up, you know, the importance and really putting on paper for us to understand what volunteer hours go in and putting a price tag on that even as you said, there's pie in the sky. Hopes there in some of it, but starting to just put it out there so that as opportunities come up that we might be able to find funding to compensate. I know this is something that in other areas around Saldovia and our many volunteer capacities, boards and entities, we're we're trying to focus on because we've been solely ran by volunteers and we don't want to run out of volunteers and people to do that. The good deeds that we need to keep Saldovia at what we all love about it. So thank you so much. And with that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda, which is going to be item J, Administrative Reports. And our first report, these are quarterly reports, is gonna be our finance report and you're gonna find that in your laydown, I believe. Yes, on page four of your laydown.
Hey, through the chair, this is Jan. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so first off, I just want to, uh, I just noticed an error or actually a few different errors in the narrative finance report, just a date. Um, as you look at the special revenue funds, um, once again, I've said the net effect as of what I intended to say for most of them was the end of the previous month and I noticed that on several of them, I forgot to change the date. So anywhere that you see 228 25, um, the the figure is correct, the date is wrong. They should all read 33125. So I just want to preface with that. Um, and I'm going to keep it fairly short because we have had a number of uh, presentations this evening. But as we look at the general fund, you can see um, we are just about at 99% of our projected revenues. So we shouldn't have any trouble meeting that target. And our expenditures are averaging 71%. Um, and oh, and I'm just getting a notice that my battery is low, so I'm really gonna speed this up here. Um, because plugging in, not an option at the moment. Um, so for our, our payroll, of course, is one of our biggest expenses on most of these and payroll, we're at 83% of the way through the year. We've only have four payrolls left. And so being at 71% on overall expenses is a good indicator that we um, are hopefully running um, over on our revenues and under on our expenses. Um, the net effect for the general fund is just about $270,000 in the black right now, which is nice to see. Um, and you can see our interest is about 17,000. Uh, that does not include any of the changes of the Charles Schwab account. I did look at that account today. Um, and it is running in the negative for 2025. Um, as we all know, it's heavily influenced by the stock market and the stock market has had kind of a challenging couple of months. But the overall change in value since the inception is is still very much in our favor. So we're not too worried about that at this time. Um, it's still making good revenue or overall, it's made good revenue. Uh, the special revenue funds, water is running a little bit in the red. Um, as you can see, it's about it's pretty close, but it's just about $600 in the red. Um, for perspective, I think last month it was closer to Um, for perspective, I think last month it was closer to, I believe it was about 4,000. So we're, we're not where we want to be, but we are moving in the right direction for the water fund. Um, and so the overall, overall net effect right now is 13,000 in the red. But what really makes sense is when we look at whole months, um, so that revenues and expenses are both recorded for the entire month. And that's where I'm getting the 610 numbers. So that's as of the end of March. Um, cause right now, if we just look at April, as I've mentioned before, we've got both our payrolls. We've got most of our expenses for April are accrued and none of the revenues are. So it's, it's not really a fair comparison if we look at the current moment in time. Uh, sewer has moved into the blacks. We're happy to see that. Um, not just, um, the net effect as the end of March, but actually also in April. So that's good news to see. And we did expect to see these revenues start to catch up as we got to the end of the year. Um, and those, um, heavy insurance expenses at the beginning of the year started to be balanced out. Um, the dock, again, the dock is, is a difficult one, obviously with no ferries. Um, between January and the beginning of April, we did not accrue any revenue from the Marine Highway System other than a little bit of charges for the phone line. Um, and so the dock obviously had a very difficult quarter. Um, even without the ferry personnel expenses, um, we still have the electricity bill, et cetera.
Uh-oh, I wonder if we lost Jan.
Uh, Madam Chair, I think she probably ran out of power, but if you want, I can.
You want to finish up the report? That'd be great. Thank you Heidi.
So, uh, the last two special revenue funds are harbor, um, which you can see is running in the black. Uh, net effect at the end of the month was 61,000. Um, that will go down a little bit as we have Stan come back on and some of those, uh, port improvements continue. And then for, uh, boat haul out, uh, we are running just a little bit in the black uh, with revenues received at 113% and expenditures at 127%. Uh, the, those, um, expenses do exceed the revenues because we did have, uh, 12,000 transfer from Amlip. Um, in order to, uh, to take care of some of the repairs that happened um, on the dock and at the, with the boat haul out. So, uh, with that overall, uh, headed in the right direction, water is still a little bit concerning. Um, but we are working on that in our FY26 budget to alleviate some of those expenditures and put that back on the general fund. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
All right. Thank you Heidi for finishing that up. Counsel, do you have any questions that Heidi can answer? No? Any questions from the public? Okay, without any questions, that all sounds good. Looks like we're in a pretty decent place right now. Oh, there's Jan. She's back.
Hi, sorry about that. My battery ran out a little faster than I was prepared for it to do, but I did manage to, to get some power to plug in here.
No worries.
And let me just pull my, my report back up here.
And Heidi, Heidi did run Jan through the, the rest of the report. So unless you've got anything you want to add, no one had any questions on it.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. All right. So with that, we will move on to our second administrative report, which is our harbor quarterly report, and you will find that on page forty-three of your, uh, is that right? Let's see. No, sorry. You're going to find that in your lay down. Ooh, I've got too many windows open. And do we have Leila or is this just going to be reading through?
This is just going to be written report. No Leila this evening.
All right. I'll give everyone a few minutes to look through it.
What page are you on Heidi?
See, Jack, it's going to be the lay down, um, page eight.
And Madam Chair, if I can share?
Yeah, that would be great.
We did receive word from, uh, Harbor Master Jan Peterson that she does anticipate that the water will be toward dawn, uh, May 5th for the harbor. So that's the plan right now. Um, I believe they have the materials ordered and in. Stan starts the first. Um, so they'll be able to get a jump start on that this season and have water available here early in May.
Awesome. I will help softly spread that word that we're aiming for that to the folks that have started to come back into town because it's right time of year. I'm starting to see people trickling back in and getting ready to splash in the water. Um, anybody on council have any questions Heidi might be able to answer for the Harbor Master report? All right. Anybody in the audience have any questions or online?
I'm not seeing any.
Perfect. Sounds good. With that, we will go ahead and move on to our next item. Item K, public hearings. Um, we have one in ordinance 25-11 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending Saldovia Municipal Code, Chapter 2.32 Elections, Sections 2.32055 and 2.32.160 and adopting section 2.32.056. And I will hand this over to the city quick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we are on page forty-four of the regular packet. And every year we do go through and kind of go through our election code and make sure that everything is kind of updated. And there are two kind of major changes that are in this ordinance. One is dealing with write-in candidacy, which did become, um, a concern last year that we really didn't have anything in our code to, um, to say what a qualified write-in candidate is. And the state has set a precedent that candidates do need to register as a write-in candidate. So currently there is a deadline to be printed on the ballot. And if you miss that deadline and would still like to run, you can run as a write-in candidate. Um, we do not have any procedure in our code currently for that. So, um, we have been, um, when council member Barber was appointed, he ran. And there was, um, there was no method to sign up for that writing candidacy. So if you'll see on page forty-four, this would add a section 2.32.056, write-in candidates. And on the following page, forty-five of your packet, you can see, um, what that chapter would look like. And it would require that the writing candidates register the, up to 3:00 PM the day before the election in order for votes for that candidate to count. And that they would have to fill out the same declaration of candidacy and disclosure form that a regular candidate would have to file. Um, so the state requires a seven-day, um, filing before the election and the Kenai Peninsula Borough does five days. But, um, I think that we'd be able to verify that candidacy the day before would be, like to give as much time as possible. So that would be the first major change. And then if you continue on to page forty-six, there's some minor changes, changing square to oval because of our new ballot choices. Um, and then the last major change will be on page forty-eight of your packet. And that would be in the case of a tie, currently are, in the case of a tie in any race or question, that would go to a special mail-in election, which in our current system with partnering with the borough can be a little costly. Um, and a lot of municipalities in Alaska do a tiebreaker, either a coin toss or a bilot. So this would replace the special election by mail with a, um, decision by lot or coin toss in the case of a tie, which is something that we did technically have two writing candidates that tied last year. So it could happen. So these are, I'll take any questions if you guys have any more.
All right. Counsel, you have any questions for Liz on any of these changes and adoptions? All right. Doesn't sound like we have anything from council, public, anyone online or in the room have any questions? All right.
Looks like we do.
Okay.
We do have Laurel, a comment if we're up to that.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I did have a question. Thanks, Ashley. Um, my question is in regards to the write-in piece. So, uh, I've never come across a registered write-in, so I'm not sure I'm fully understanding it. So when a person is an intentional candidate who didn't go through the process of being entered onto the ballot, um, then they're actively recruiting to be written in. So like Lisa Murkowski did that one year. Okay. But what happens in Saldovia with write-in is people go to the election. They either feel there's not enough candidates to choose from, or they don't want to choose from the existing candidates. So they then write in names. And I think it's not, uh, a foreign thing that we've had people join committees and council, um, who are written in. So the notion that a person would have to register to be written in, um, might not be indicative of what actually happens in Saldovia. So I would just say that basically by adopting that, you are eliminating people's ability to at the poll, write in someone that they think should be elected. So that's, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you Laurel. Um, Liz, do you have any comments on that? And I know we had run into that even though there were write-ins, as you had mentioned, there, there wasn't actually anything in our code to go through that process correctly, if I remember right.
Yeah. So currently to be on the ballot, you have to sign up by a certain time. Um, I believe it's August 15th, um, in order to get your name printed on the ballot that lines up with our code and the borough code. So if people miss that deadline and they want to be an intentional candidate and round up votes, um, we, as a clerk, it's, need to make sure that they are a eligible candidate um, in order for those votes to count on election day. So that is the registration requirement and it's used in most of the municipalities within the state now. The Kenai Peninsula Borough, Homer, Kenai and Soldana. Though people are still welcome to write in a name on there, but only the registered write-in candidates would.
Yeah. So that being said, it would be a cultural shift for the community, for sure.
Madam Chair, if I may add?
Yeah.
I hear you, uh, Laurel, and I understand your concern. The issue that we've had in the last several years, because this has come up, um, specifically last year. And then I think there was a couple of years before that where that happened. Is that even though that name is written in, then you still, and so people can still write in. That's not changing. You can still write a candidate in. You can write anybody in. We have people write Mickey Mouse in. Um, so that is still a voter's right. But if that person hasn't declared that they want to be a write-in candidate, then the, the prob, not the problem, but then the process is that if they have, like for instance, this year, Mr. Barber, um, had a large, uh, uh, an amount of votes um, as a write-in candidate, but he didn't have a, a declared interest in it. And we didn't have the eligibility check for him to be a candidate. So afterwards, what we do and what we've done, um, even previous to my tenure, tenure as city clerk, from my understanding, is then they do a roll call of those candidates going down the list. Whoever has the highest amount of votes and asks them if they would like to be appointed as a, uh, member of council. And if they do, then that is done, uh, as a different process. They're not, um, technically elected, but the council then can appoint them up until the next election year. And that's the more formal process, um, of having a write-in candidate then take a seat through the, the city office. So you can still, uh, write in candidates. That's still completely applicable. But this provides a process for those candidates, for those individuals who say, hey, there is maybe some interest in me being a write-in and I would like to, uh, declare and ensure that I'm eligible to be that person, um, so that they can have the full seat.
Thank you. And it's good to know that that would still be available because I'm pretty sure that Mayor Gaines in his latest election came in, in that manner. So, I mean, when the community wants to speak at the last minute, I think it's important that they be allowed to. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you Laurel for bringing that up for clarification. Uh, if there's nobody else.
Actually, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I would be in favor of the ordinance 25-11, just for those reasons that the staff have brought up. Over the years, it's been, um, kind of a humorous situation and, and, uh, so to know who wants to run and who is willing to run is, is a, is a good mindset to have. So I'm, I'm in favor of ordinance 25-11. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Vivian. Um, with that, we will move on to, if, take action on this. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 25-11?
I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance 25-11 as read.
I'll second.
All right. We have Kennedy and a second by Rojas. All those in favor? Kennedy?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
I think that person aye.
Can you hear me?
Oh, I hear you now. Yes.
Aye. Sorry.
Uh, Keith Lee, aye. Barber?
Aye.
And Rojas?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Moving on to item L unfinished business, we have none this evening. Item M, new business, we have two. Our first item is Action Memorandum 25-10, approving the certification of the FY24 audit as presented by LG Refilled LLC Certified Public Accountants. And I will turn this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is on page 50 of your packet. And I'm noticing that there is a typo under summary statement. This should been, uh, it should state that a, that the draft of the audit was presented uh, during the 28th, April 28th, regular city council meeting. Sorry, that did not get updated, um, for this packet. Um, otherwise, this is an action memorandum approving the certification of the FY24 audit as presented by LG Refilled LLC, uh, during the, oh, and I, and I should say during the April 28th work session prior to the regular meeting. Um, and then with the attachments and those are included, uh, online through email. Our printer, uh, had a printer error, so we weren't able to print them out again for this meeting. But we do have them from the work session packet and online. Uh, that's from the letter to the governing board, a year ending June 30th, 2024. And those basic financial statements also year ending June 30th, 24th as presented in the work session, uh, prior to this meeting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you Heidi. I will turn this over to council discussion. You guys have any questions or comments on Action Memorandum 25-10? All right, hearing none. Uh, do, do we have any public presentation that we're hearing on this? Any comments? No. All right. Then I will look for action on Action Memorandum 25-10 from the council.
Madam. I will make, yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve Action Memorandum 25-10.
I'll second that.
All right, we have an approval by Rojas and a second by Kennedy. All those in favor? Kennedy?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Barber?
Aye.
And Rojas?
Aye.
All right, our action memorandum passes unanimously. Moving on to our next item, item two. Let me just find my stuff here. Resolution twenty-five dash forty-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saldovia, Alaska, amending the city of Saldovia personnel policy, sections two oh two, employment classifications, and four oh four sick leave. And I will hand this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have had this discussion, um, about the ballot measure one that was passed last, uh, fall. Uh, that was an act increasing the minimum wage, requiring paid sick leave and prohibiting mandatory meetings about religious or political issues. The state is still working on the regulations for this, uh, ballot measure, these new laws. Um, and we've participated in a couple of meetings pertaining to it, um, and had this discussion with council previously. Uh, have, will have a minimum, uh, budgetary impact to the city of Saldovia. Um, however, while I was working through this process with our attorney, um, she did state that, that currently there isn't anything, um, compelling a political division of the state of Alaska to follow this guidance. Um, they don't know if it will be in the guidance or not, uh, but it didn't, it seems like they're, um, that potentially the municipality may not have to follow through with this, um, requirement for sick leave. However, uh, we're waiting on those regulations, and if this is something that the city council still wanted to support, um, as I said, it does have a, a minimal, uh, budgetary impact, uh, that it would make us competitive, um, or keep us, um, in line with employers outside of the municipality. So, uh, wanted to throw that out there, that if this is something that the city council wishes to hold and wait on, um, that's perfectly acceptable, and we can wait and see what those regulations come, um, out as. Otherwise, there is language drafted in this regulation, or sorry, in this resolution, uh, to update the employment classification under part-time to include sick leave as a mandatory contribution and benefit. And then under section four oh four sick leave, uh, it updates that language uh, to follow the language provided through ballot measure one and align more clearly with the state. And it looks like there was supposed to be a red line copy in here on page fifty-three and fifty-four, but it looks like it printed without the red lines. Um, so I can bring that back uh, at a future meeting if you guys, um, want to hold on this. Otherwise, um, it, it just aligns us with the state of Alaska, that Alaska statute, um, AS twenty-three, ten, zero, six, seven, um, and with the, the fifty-six hour, um, uh, rate for sick leave as provided by the state of Alaska, and that can roll over. Uh, but it is, uh, not able to be cashed out, um, and it can't be donated to other employees. So with that, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Heidi. Um, as I'm looking at this, um, under our resolution, I, is that a typo where it says requiring that employees of smaller employees accrue a minimum of forty hours, and then in larger employees, a minimum of fifty-six? Isn't that supposed, is that maximum, supposed to be maximum? Annually, that's what they can accrue, not minimum?
I would pull that off of, that came from the state's website, so I will have to pull that up if you give me a moment.
Yeah, because I think if you scroll down under four oh four six sick leave, it says, um, eligible employees accrue sick leave at a rate of one hour sick leave for every thirty hours worked up to a maximum of fifty-six hours.
Yes. Yep, you're correct. So that should say maximum there on both of those lines.
I was like, ooh. Um, and yes, I, I was wondering if we would see this, because I, I didn't realize myself that this, we were still waiting on things to come through, and I know I had put it in a employment agreement for a seasonal employee and had to go back to him to let him know, like, because it's kind of weird for a seasonal employee to have, have this, this enacted. And I had to go back and say, hey, actually, this might not happen, and, you know, by the time, not that somebody's gonna usually utilize that six leave and a two-month stint. So I was wondering if we would see this. Um, council, do you have any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I just have one comment. Um, I would be in favor of waiting until it's clear and, and going then.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rojas.
Yep, yep. Uh, I would, uh, as council member Kennedy also said, I think at this point, this gender that we're at, let's hold off and look at it again. Seems how we have some typos and some information that did, wasn't received into the, uh, packet. So I would be in favor of holding off and see where we're at. Even though we did decide it would be a great thing for incentive, uh, an incentive for our employees, but let's hold off until we have all the information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Rojas. I, I agree with them as well, just, just from what I've been getting in my, um, email the last couple of weeks on updates of the, even if it's going through, that some things might change. That way, we can make sure that whatever, whatever we have will be correctly aligned with what, what ends up passing. Because there was a few, a few different items that they were looking at having, even if we decide to go above and beyond what actually passes, I think that, I, I know I learned myself now by jumping the gun. Um, that way, in case something happens where we would have needed to adjust it to, you know, give more sick leave or something, we wouldn't be caught with our hands tied. Um, anybody else on council have any questions or discussion? Anybody in the public? All right, so with that, um, Heidi, do we, what it, there's no, it sounds like are we still gonna go for a vote on this? I know that that's three of us.
So you can handle this a couple of different ways. One way would be to postpone to a time certain. Um, and then that would mean that we would bring it back at the next meeting or a future meeting, whatever that determination of time is. Uh, if you postpone it indefinitely, uh, then it automatically kills it. Um, or if you take no action on it, um, then it dies on the table, but we can still bring back a new order, or a new resolution in the future.
Can, um, postponing it to a time certain, can that time certain be when the, when the actual po- um, policy and comes out that we have to follow, or does it need to be a set date right now?
I believe it could be open-ended if you wanted to do that, regulations, but I'm looking at our city clerk.
Um, yeah, I think it would be clearer to bring back a new resolution if you have an uncertain date to it.
Okay. Uh, then is there any, anything that we need to do besides just saying that we want to bring it, bring that, um, let this die and just bring back a new resolution when, when we get the updated policy from the state?
Oh, that can be the consensus of the council, and we can move on.
All right, perfect. And we will go ahead and move on. Next item is going to be item N, the city manager's report, and I will hand that over to Heidi.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, this is, report is located in your laydown, and there's quite a bit of new information in here. I hope I captured it all, or at least some updated information, uh, starting with the multi-purpose building generation improvements project. We were able to order a generator, uh, that has a three-week build time. It was ordered on Friday. Uh, so that three-week build time should have started today, um, and then it will be shipped once that build is complete. Uh, there's specifications included in the packet. Let me know if you have any questions on it. Uh, the upper dam PSI contract, um, for that upper dam public, or sorry, periodic safety inspection was issued, and, uh, we're in the plans, we're in the works for, uh, orchestrating that inspection here prior to June thirtieth. It sounded like they wanted to come down as soon as possible, uh, wh- when we last spoke at the end of the week, last week, but I haven't heard any updates yet. So hopefully, we'll see them here in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then, uh, Ben Wagner with, uh, the state of Alaska, the dam safety engineer, who's been on this, uh, project with us, is also hoping to attend at that time. Streetsweeper, good news. Uh, the DOT Streetsweeper arrived yesterday on the ferry and departs next Sunday. So you should be seeing Johnny and Tyler out there this week, uh, sweeping the streets. And we got a nice early start to the spring. Homer wasn't quite ready for it, so, uh, they were willing to let it come across the bay for a week until everybody else is prepared, and we're gonna get that jump start that we're always after every year. The city dock inspection has been hanging out at the bottom of this report for about a year now, a little less than a year, as that periodic inspection was performed in July. Uh, and we received the report last week. So I have been in communication with AMHS regarding the long-range plan, regarding this report. They did have their AMHOB meeting on Friday, April twenty-fifth. I listened in on the morning and did provide public comment, uh, just again stating that we, uh, provided a letter of support for the long-range plan and are willing and wanting to work with AMHS on any necessary repairs to the dock, uh, as well as, uh, remedies for the upland staging and parking issues that were noted in that long-range plan. Uh, I was told that our request has been sent to the AMHS engineering department, um, and hopefully we'll hear back from them in the future. I also wanted to let you guys know, if you hadn't, um, been informed yet, that the septic lift station replacement project, uh, has been, uh, completed. So the lift station is now fully operational and functioning on two pumps. It's very exciting. Uh, we did have a little hiccup sourcing that American Iron and Steel certified chain for pulling the pumps for maintenance. So that is something we're still trying to locate and get here in order to close out the project. But as for the operations of that, um, infrastructure, it is, is fully operational. It's very exciting. And Peninsula Construction had a few hiccups during their process, but they really worked through them, and they were, they were great to work with. Our Aqua Grants for the Main Street Inlets and Vista and Frank Gravy Stormwater Improvement Projects, uh, was finalized. Uh, and we are in the process of also ordering a pickup room so that we'll have that on hand, uh, to do, be able to do street sweeping um, more frequently, um, and when the state, uh, Streetsweeper is not available. So we can pick up that piece a little bit earlier, and the RFPs for the engineering work were on tonight's agenda. So those have been approved, and will go out tomorrow morning. Excellent news. We received our FFY twenty-four CDBG grant. That was that huge document, um, that took quite a bit of heavy lifting to get submitted last December, along with a community survey that, uh, the staff phoned every single mem- resident in the community that they could. Um, and, uh, really, the community was very receptive. And with that, we were able to verify our limited, um, moderate income levels and then qualify for this grant, um, application. We submitted it on time, and we received notice that, um, we have been approved for that award. There is a twenty-five percent local match that the city of Saldovia committed through the, it was supposed to be through the Community Assistance Program, but, uh, knowing that, that that funding level has decreased by like thirty-two percent. Uh, we'll be discussing tomorrow night some additional ways to fund the match for that project. And that's about eighty thousand. It was about two hundred and forty-seven from the CDBG and eighty thousand from the city. For the Jack Loaf Bay Dock, uh, I'm still working on that Denali Commission grant application, or that, sorry, not application, but the Denali Commission Award documents, because we did receive that award as well, um, to make that project hold. So we are very thankful for that consideration from the Denali Commission and look forward, um, to seeing that project continue through. And that was about four hundred and, I can't have the, I should have put the number on here, but four hundred and something thousand dollars for match for Jack Loaf and non-federal funds. The city office maintenance shop energy improvements project, we did issue an, uh, RFP for that. In essence, we were told, um, this was a REVIT project, and we were told, go ahead and move forward with this project. It was initially one that, um, was paused, um, due to the new executive orders. Um, but we are, are now moving full steam ahead on it. And we have received some interest from multiple parties and actually have, uh, multiple site visits planned this week. So that RFP closes, I believe, next week. Um, and then we will present, um, potentially a resolution approving a, um, an award at the May twelfth meeting. Water meters, um, I've since, writing this city manager's report this morning, have had further discussion, um, with another community about water meters, um, and we've got some pretty good leads on some water meters that are sitting on the shelf in a couple of different communities that they could loan and, and let us use for an indefinite time, uh, just so that we can start that process. Uh, I am looking at options for reading those. Um, typically, they'd be installed in a waterline, you know, in a crawl space or closet, or, um, you know, wherever the pipe is coming into the house. So we need to look into, I guess they have some wired options that can have a, a digital reading that would be, um, like a box, like a digital reading box that you could wire and then have it outside of the infrastructure and then read it manually. Um, or I wanted to explore and see what it would look like. Um, a lot of these communities do a, um, like a remote reading that they drive by, and they can capture those readings. Uh, so if we have such a small amount of activity happening, potentially, there could be a break there. I'm not quite sure. I'm still working on it. Um, but did have a, a fantastic discussion with the water utility operator for Takitna's Water and Sewer last week. Uh, they have a similar sized system as ours. They have about two hundred and twenty customers. However, they have more commercial customer, customers than we do. Um, and that was their recommendation, was to reach out to communities to see if, um, they have meters on their shelves that they're no longer using. Uh, and then they also discussed that, uh, for Takitna, and that was the other community I was talking to today, I mentioned, um, you know, implementing five or ten water meters as a pilot program, uh, could be beneficial. However, when you start getting into larger numbers than that, at least for, for Takitna, um, they, they didn't find that conducive budget-wise. So they just went all in in two thousand and fourteen, and they metered their whole community, um, through a, they had funding through VSW to do that. Um, and interestingly, they have a three percent sales tax rate that goes just to water and sewer. So obviously, that's not the makeup of our community. Um, but it's nice to know that other people have been through, you know, similar circumstances as us, and that those supports are out there, and we'll continue to work and see what that'll look like, um, here moving into the next year. For the KPB Tourism Industry Working Group, I attended a meeting on April tenth, uh, where a final report was presented with a recommendation to the assembly to explore and implementing a seasonal tax. We talked about that before, that, um, that was brought up, that there was interest in the borough exploring a four percent tax, uh, during the summer season, and then a two percent tax in the winter season, similar to how our seasonal tax rate works. Uh, and then that was brought forth in this final report. However, that report was not approved by that working group. Um, and a special meeting was supposed to be held, um, prior to the presentation to the assembly. I just heard back from the assembly clerk. Looks like that did not, uh, was not able to take place either. Uh, however, the assembly did grant an extension to the working group. So they will be scheduling a meeting, um, here coming up. So I will keep um, paying attention to that and let you guys know when's upcoming of, of that working group recommendation. DOT collaboration, I just haven't given you guys an update on this, uh, in a while. Uh, I was, we did talk about it the last meeting, uh, in the, in my report that I did meet with DOT regarding the pedestrian counter program, of which I did submit a request. So hopefully we hear from them and we can get some of those uh, installed in the community this summer. Uh, we also discussed with DOT uh, submitting an invite, an invite to traffic and safety to perform a field visit here. Uh, so I did send that letter out and still waiting to hear back from them and get those dates. And then we also discussed that speed limits, um, were decreased in city of Sodovia. And there was an interest in decreasing the city of, uh, the speed limit on Main Street. Um, however, it suggested that there could be some other more beneficial alternatives to address those safety concerns. Um, regard, uh, besides lowering speed limits, because that takes a, a pretty hefty enforcement, um, follow-up for it. So that's part of that traffic and safety visit is to see what recommendations DOT has um, in order to provide some traffic calming in the community and, and address some of those safety, um, concerns that come up particularly regarding pedestrians and bicycle bicyclists. Uh, I also sent another email requesting a follow-up on the Jack Loaf Bay Uplands remediation and Sodovia Main Street Stormwater Management Projects. And I'm hoping to hear back, uh, about that here soon. And I'll keep following up on that. I did want to give a radio upgrade, uh, pro- uh, uh, report, uh, regarding the emergency radio project. Um, we know that Finance Officer Jaeger submitted a grant application to assistance to firefighters to upgrade those radios. Um, and that we are, that the state, um, is changing how they operate radio frequencies um, and recommending that, uh, communities change to ALMR radios. Um, we have been in discussion with Mark Ball with Sodovia Village Tribe regarding the radio response in the community overall and have signed an AM, ALMR sharing ingredient, agreement with SVT uh, and the state to have a shared radio talk group, uh, on that frequency. So we're all just kind of working through the steps of what that will look like for, uh, dispatch and for emergency service services moving forward. Um, and making sure that we are still functioning, um, and radios are still available. So uh, it's been really great to have Mark Ball's, uh, help with this. Uh, he's, he's really um, dived in and he's been a really great asset, uh, when it comes to all things radio. Water Service Connection Inventory, I wanted to let you guys know that we did receive that thirty thousand dollar payment for the reimbursable grant for that service line inventory project that we did. So that is in the bank and we will be discussing, uh, potentially discussing that tomorrow night. Uh, it will just sit, um, in water unless you guys want to, um, set it aside in the major maintenance and repair fund for future media process, uh, purchases. Um, or if there's something else you want to do with it, water-related, that that thirty thousand dollars was received. And just to give you guys, uh, update, I did not want to delete, uh, the chart from March and April with the budget schedule, because I wanted you to see the work that you guys have done, how far you've come um, since February regarding budget and other work sessions. We are scheduled to have another work session tomorrow for budget. I'm hoping, um, it's pretty wrapped up, uh. On my end, um, there's still a few questions and we'll discuss senior meals and some capital projects and some of of the other considerations that you guys have requested. Um, so with that, potentially it could be ready after tomorrow night's discussion to be introduced at the May twelfth meeting. If not, and we need a further discussion, um, we'll have to find time next week to have another work session to wrap that up. So we'll see how tomorrow night goes. And then with everything else, I believe I've provided those updates uh, previously. So please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Lots of great information tonight. Counsel, do you have any questions for Heidi?
Um, Madam Chair. Yes. Discussions with the Department of Transportation, has there been anything regarding, uh, their assistance with helping us clean that mess up when that time comes?
Through the chair, not yet. Um, I had the initial response that these were great initiatives. I put it back out there multiple times, um, and then really haven't had anything come back to us from it yet. So um, I continue to make that request and, and we'll continue to do so.
Okay, and, uh, okay, the rest can wait. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else?
Madam Chair.
Uh huh.
Yep, um, the, if I could get clarification, Heidi, the two grants that we received for one Jack Loaf and then the one for the fuel station, the, um, the share, the, the portion that we are obligated for is about eighty thousand. Did I hear you say about eighty thousand for the fuel and loop?
Through the chair, yes. So for the CDBG, um, we are committed to about eighty thousand and I'll have those numbers at tomorrow night's meeting. I apologize for not getting it into the packet tonight. Um, but yes, we have committed in that resolution that we sent with um, the application, uh, twenty-five, uh, twenty-five percent match for that grant. And that was about eighty thousand. Jack Loaf, we committed a hundred and forty thousand. Um, and that's out of the deferred revenues for Jack Loaf that we received from the state. And we do have those um, in an account sitting aside. So matches for both projects, uh, the eighty thousand is the one that we will have to discuss tomorrow. Um, and, and come up with a plan for.
Okay, thank you. And great report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vivian. Anybody else? All right. With that, we will move on to item O, informational items not requiring action. We've got two this evening. One, the introduction of ordinance twenty-five dash oh nine was postponed pending a work session. A work session on the ordinance is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. And our second item is Sodovia City Council Work Session will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five at five PM regarding the FY twenty-six budget draft, just as Heidi had mentioned in her report. Item P, executive session, we have none. Item Q, council mayor comments concerning items not on the agenda. Kennedy?
The library agreement, I guess it'd be my only question. Um, I don't know what the council's thought is on it, but maybe an updated agreement there. And, uh, then after we get through our match funds, maybe we can have a conversation about what we might be able to do to help the library or to at least address their request. And then, uh, this is completely off subject, but a, the Alaska News Source is reporting two fatalities. One injured.
Thank you, John. I, I thought I had seen that as well. So I know our, that hits really close to home.
Yeah.
Um, Harmony.
None this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and myself, um, thank you for hanging in there, guys, with me as I pulled in for Mayor Camel tonight. Glad I could still make it happen. Grandma and Grandpa are here, so that made it helpful. Um, and Barbara?
Something that I would like to bring up as we come to the end here. Uh, the outside beach, the last storm in there carried a lot of gravel and sand up on the pavilion. And I'm wondering if there's some volunteers that would maybe come out there and we could clean the place up a little bit. I'd be one of them. Um, anyway, it's a place that a lot of people frequent this time of the year. So I think I'd clean house a little bit.
Great point, Jack. Thank you for bringing that up. I see Heidi writing that down and I'm guessing she's probably thinking what I was right when you said that, which is we have our, uh, our annual cleanup day or week, our week cleanup week. And that's a perfect item to add to that. And Harmony's got her hand raised, so I'll cycle back to Harmony.
I would love to help with that project. And also like to add to that thought, um, I think a gentle reminder to people um, with maybe some signage around the campsites and the pavilion to just remind people that, hey, you know, like, please don't, you know, like, don't leave broken glass at the top of the beach here. Um, or on your campfire and maybe like clean up after dogs, whatever that could look like. Um, we just have a lot of kids that play barefoot every summer and there are a couple of moms that invariably we spend a lot of time cleaning up dog poop in the grass line and glass out of the fire pit area, which is just part of being like a neighbor. Sorry for Florence. She has opinions. Uh, but.
Oh, I think you've cut out there a little bit, Harmony.
Maybe just like her. Reminding people.
We're not really catching the last of what you're saying, but we did hear you saying that we need to remind people to be good citizens and pick up dog poo and glass.
Yep, I know. I don't want to be aggressive with people. I don't want to like try to like put in some sort of enforcement thing, but go ahead.
We cut just the tail, tail end after that. You were cutting out quite a bit, Harmony. All right, uh, looks like her connection maybe wasn't great. And then, uh, Rojas?
Uh, yeah, big thanks to everyone for tonight and good conversations. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, um, item R, our next meeting, the next regular meeting will be held on Monday, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five at six PM. And item S, I will look for a movement for adjournments.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. We've got a motion to adjourn by Rojas and a second by Kennedy. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you tomorrow.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.